Is Susan here?
Yes.
Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled Select Board meeting for Monday, April 28th, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who sustains our nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just for all.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome to our humble abode. If you could just give us your name, Susan, and we are interviewing you for the Council on Aging Director position, and just give us your history of, I think, 16 years working at the COA, and what you've done, what you've accomplished, and what you plan on doing in the future.
My name's Susan Prendergast, and I've been with the COA for six, little over 16 years. I'm the Activities Coordinator, Newsletter Editor, and, but we kind of all do it. We've all worked very well as a team, and always have. And some of the things I've done, I've organized, I facilitate the SALT meetings every month, which is seniors and law enforcement together, and we have different programs and events. And actually, we have one on Thursday, we have a breakfast, and Ben Semenow from Channel Five is coming to talk about how to avoid being scams, being scammed, which goes along with our mission for the SALT Council, which is to keep seniors safe in their homes and in their community. So we have 80 people coming for that on Thursday, and I know the people that come into the Council on Aging, I know most of them by name, we're meeting new people every day, we're very busy. We, I also try to work, work with the other departments in town. We have a community event every, now every fall, a shred event where we work with the Fire Department, Police Department, we do it on National Drug Takeback Day, so we have a shred truck, and so people can shred all of their important papers, they can return all of their, or recycle all of their medication, give it to the Police Department. The Fire Department takes sharps, and the DPW takes large batteries and small engine motors, and that has been going on for six or seven years now, and it's become very popular in the community itself. I think I would just, I would be a good fit for Director as the Council on Aging. Like I said, I know most of the people that come in, I know the staff very well, the volunteers. People come into the center often and tell us how they love coming to this building, coming into the center, because everybody is so friendly, and it's such a fun, nice place to be. I mean, it's a beautiful building, the grounds are beautiful, and it is a nice place to be. And I just think it would be a nice, smooth transition for all. I know that Tom.
Okay, Carol. As a former COA Director.
Yes, I was COA Director in Carver for 10 years, as a part-time, as also part of being Library Director. What do you see as any challenges in going from being Activities Coordinator to being the Director? What kind of things do you anticipate?
Well, when Nancy is out, I tend to assume the role, like if anyone comes in with, if there's any problems that arise. When she, if she's on vacation, I do the payroll, I do the warrants, you know, the invoices, and, so I do, not do a lot of what she does, but when she's out, I do, I do pitch in and take over for that.
Peter.
Yeah, so I was really glad to hear that you applied for the, for the position, having been there for so long. So I'm gonna go back to my Board of Health days, and just a couple of questions regarding. Now, they still have the visiting nurse working at the, the COA?
Yes.
Okay, and that, that's still the same hours and same type of position, visiting with the, with the seniors and whatnot, or is there any other activities she gets involved in, or?
Well, she's there once a week, on Wednesdays from 9:00 to 12:00, and it's an open door, and appointments aren't needed.
Oh, okay, alright.
And people, and she has a steady group of people that come in every Wednesday. Wednesday is typically a busy day for us, and she does have a lot of people that come in, and we, we've done, with the Board, in conjunction with the Board of Health, we've done flu clinics, you know, during COVID, we did, you know, vaccine clinics. And she, they, they work with us for the Safety and Wellness Fair, which is in June.
Okay.
So yeah, we do work with them, so.
And the rabies clinic, still, still something that happens down there, or they've changed that?
They basically book it with us, just, just to confirm that they, the, because they're in the basement, so it's not like, that basement obviously isn't rented out, but just to make sure we don't have any other events going on, it's for parking issues, and then we advertise it in the newsletter.
Okay. And my last, just a comment, so I've been told that particularly, there's one individual that seems to go down there quite a bit, and I'm just hoping that individual is, isn't gonna be a pain in the ass to you.
Especially where he's gonna have so much more free time.
A hundred percent, right? I mean, that's, that's like, you know.
We'll put him to work.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
I have my office on.
He needs a job.
It does. Alright, that's all I got, thank you.
A couple of things, I know Nancy currently is, has the SERF Safe Certificate. Are you ready to?
I've already kind of looked into what it would take to become SERF Safe Certified, and it is an online course, and I would be ready to take it at any time.
Okay. How about the SHINE program that Nancy's involved in?
I know she, she did SHINE before, I believe when she was hired, it was to do SHINE, that was one of her main, she was outreach, and then when she became Director, Kelly now is the SHINE Coordinator, or SHINE Counselor for East Bridgewater, so Nancy does dabble in it still, she helps out with what Kelly can't handle, but I would certainly look into it if the need arose to, to become certified.
What is that? Do you know?
SHINE, it's a.
Serving health information needs of everyone. Used to be serving health and age needs for the elderly, I think, which we don't say elderly anymore, but now it's serving health information needs of everyone. And it's, it's, she's busiest during open enrollment, Medicare open enrollment. We, we see Kelly like in the morning when she comes in, and the evening when she leaves, because she's just booked back to back.
Alright, so she basically helping out with, with like use of the Medicare, Medicaid, or whatever.
Right. People make the decisions of what supplements.
She just shows them what is offered, and, but it's not just showing them, it's a huge.
It is, it's a lot.
It's a lot, yes, and she has to continually maintain her certification, go for courses, and, so it's a huge undertaking, and she's very good at it.
I never did it, we had a volunteer, I didn't do it.
Oh, yeah.
It's a lot.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Susan Prendergast as Council on Aging Director pending, just some going over of the offer letter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
If you want to touch base tomorrow, we can set something up.
Sure, yep.
You got 20 minutes, get back to work.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, have a great night, bye.
Do we expect the?
I hear people in the hallways.
I'll see if they're ready.
We're probably gonna need to take a break at some point, because we did tell people on Summit Drive, 645, and we're gonna, I don't know, they're gonna have 45 minutes of.
Well, we have a public hearing at 6:30, so.
We'll see how long.
We'll get the action items done. We can go into.
And we have kids coming at 6:00.
Yeah.
Wait and put up the police. We have a few minutes.
We may have to.
Chief North says some of them are on call.
Police Department.
Police, oh, I don't know.
We got two that are running in now.
From Fire?
Had something that you wanted to discuss real quick.
Maybe I'll call downstairs and see.
Yeah, do you want to do some action items while we wait?
Yeah, we can start with the action items, let everyone get to it.
We're gonna skip number one until after the hearing.
Wait till one more?
The transfer of the elections.
Yeah. Okay, I make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the March 24th, 2025 Select Board Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 27th, 2025 Select Boards Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 7th, 2025 Select Board Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to appoint Tim Haron to the Traffic Advisory Committee effective April 28th, 2025, no designated terms, that just means it's just for life.
Yep, we got him forever.
You think he was going away?
No.
Second.
Okay, welcome back, Tim. All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Haynes from the Council on Aging effective May 1st, 2025.
Second.
I'd like to thank Mary for all the work she's done with the Council on Aging, she was our treasurer, their treasurer, prior to her resignation, and she is on her way to Lindwood, I think, up in Raymond, or Hingham, so thank you for everything.
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve and authorize the Chair to sign the Regional Planning Energy Assistance Agreement with Old Colony Planning Council for administrative work on the town's green communities, applications, and projects.
Second.
Dolly?
This is sort of re-upping with them, they've been handling administrative duties in terms of doing the progress reports, and the green applications and final reports of green communities, which has been very successful, we're going to be, in fact, just the spring starting weatherization program, an installation program for several of the town buildings, we hope that we're gonna be able to apply for another grant this fall, and they're integral in making that happen.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to review and approve reimbursement requests from a clerical union member for a certificate or degree program.
Second.
And this is not yet a reimbursement or anything like that, Patricia Black's just starting out on a, I think it was an accounting certificate, but would have to be an associate's degree, and so normally what happens is an employee would, before they start the program, meet with the Board to get their approval to move ahead with the program, she didn't realize that that was a stipulation in the contract, I'm recommending this, she's a very good employee there in the Treasurer Collector's Office, and I want to certainly encourage our staff to take whatever educational is available to them, and also then reward them for doing so. It's gonna be still several years before she gets the associate's degree, but I would look forward to doing that, and the Board could approve this pending agreement with the Union.
Okay, and just for clarification, this is just something that she's already started the program?
Started, yeah.
Didn't realize they had to come before this Board, so we're not looking for any reimbursement or anything at this time, just to get her moving along in the program. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to award a contract for the Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspector Work for April 2025 through June 2027.
Second.
And we had one bid, which was from Precision Wildlife for, it's like $43,850 for the period from March to June of '26, and then another $43,000 some odd dollars for fiscal year '27, a little over $5,000 a year for their animal inspector services.
Okay, it's been a long time coming. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion on retaining or selling property at 625 Harvard Street.
This was a piece of land that the town received by donation, the Board, the town being approved, accepting it, but we don't have any particular use for that property, none of the departments indicated any interest in retaining it. It may be developable, in which case I'd like to see what, in terms of what the market is willing to pay for, I mean, get it back on the tax rolls would be better.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, any questions? Peter?
Uh, no, none to this, at this point.
So you want a motion that we're gonna sell it? I make a motion that we sell the property at 625 Harvard Street.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to sign the annual town election warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it for action items.
Could you just cancel that call?
Good see ya.
Call for mutual aid.
I would just continue with the presentations.
Okay.
Okay, we are here to give out commendations to Police and Fire Department personnel that were involved in the rescue of an injured tree worker last month, at the beginning of this month, I guess. Craig, would you like to come up and explain this? Exactly how it went?
He'd be thrilled.
And I know Matt Foster wants to come out and talk too, because we had had a conversation with, I'd like you to repeat that conversation we had a while ago.
Oh, sure.
We received a call for injured person in a, in a tree off a captain's way north of Drive. When we arrived, we found him in the backyard, approximately 45 feet in the air, still fastened to the tree, injured, semi-conscious. We also had a language barrier, we had no access for the ladder truck, showed up with the five people behind me, and we had to put a plan together pretty quick. We ended up contacting the Plymouth County Tech Rescue Team, they have the equipment and the training, to set up a rope system, lower the person down to the ground, the ambulance crew treated him, took him to the landing zone, and transferred care over to Medplate. Patient was in Boston approximately an hour and a half after the time of the call. We haven't heard any outcome as of yet, but he was expected to do okay.
Good.
Interesting call, not one you, you normally anticipate.
And again, obviously, everyone knew exactly how to respond to it, through training and everything else over the years.
Kind of had to pull it together in a few minutes, yeah. It went well, everybody worked very hard.
Matt Foster, would you like to come up and relay this conversation that we had a while ago?
I don't remember the conversation.
He's taking the fifth.
The coordination between all the different people involved, the different departments that brought them.
Maybe you should say it. You remind me what you said, and I will back you up.
No, 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 this is your story.
My story. I think one of the most important parts of this call was watching so many different departments come in at a moment's notice, within four or five minutes, we had people from, a guy from Rochester who happened to work down the street, was here from the Tech Rescue Team to help us out, we had chiefs from all over the place coming in to help us out, and we had firefighters from Brockton, leading chiefs and deputy, or deputy chiefs and captains from other towns, and in the rescue efforts, and watching the, the chain of command kind of not drop away, but rank become secondary to getting the guy out of the tree was, was huge, and watching how well-oiled a machine they were working together to get this rescue affected was impressive, was one of the most incredible calls I've been on.
Yeah, we had this conversation a while back, and again, just to hear, you know, the way Matt was talking about that, it's just something that you always hope happens, you saw it happen, spread over so many different departments, so many different, so many different ranks.
Right.
But just to see that work, and I was just very impressed, that's why I wanted to tell that story.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. We have commendations by everyone, and I'll read one, and then we'll try and pass these out to the right people. Certificate of Commendation on behalf of the Town of East Bridgewater and its citizens, the Select Board wants to commend you for your displaying dedication and courage during an emergency on March 26th, 2025. These heroic actions despite great risk to you result in lifesaving efforts rendered to a citizen in distress, and it is our pleasure to recognize Greg Windsor, Deputy Fire Chief, your dedication to the preservation of life is to be commended, dated this 14th day of April, 2025, Assisted Catherine Kavanaugh Town Clerk, Dave Sheedy, Peter Spigot Jr., and Carol Julius. Thank you all for everything you did, you made a big difference in someone's life. Just start passing these out.
Can I get the duty shift up here that was on the call along the wall for your certificates? Is this one? Yeah. Did you guys want to hold the certificates, or did you?
Yeah, we can give them up.
Right, give her up.
Congratulations, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You could tell your own little story.
What's that? I could tell my own ambulance story, but I won't.
Can I get the, the board in there too?
Sure.
Thank you, good job. Say cheese, chin's up, done, thank you. If I could, Chairman, just two more awards for two gentlemen that are currently here, would you indulge me, could I do that?
Absolutely, sir.
So the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Fire Service Commission recognizes longevity in the fire service throughout the state, obviously, we have two members here tonight that I wanted to award their certificate from the Fire Service Commission in their pin. Lieutenant Matt Foster, if you want to come up there, buddy, he's 20 years. And I'm gonna make sure I get the right pin. This pin gets worn on their service uniform, as well as their Class A, to signify the fact that they've been recognized by the state. The next gentleman is obviously, are probably our most senior member, is Deputy Chief Windsor, and he has, yeah, 25 years, respectively. And there's your pin as well. And I just want to thank the Board for recognizing the firefighters, you have a great group of firefighters down there, and indulging me with enough time to give those service awards out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, folks, appreciate it.
You know how tough it was to get all these guys, gals together?
We do, it took a couple different meetings.
I expect you to feed them now, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
You too.
So Jason, we were not able to get it up on the screen, we spent several minutes trying to get the file to show up, and it was not being very cooperative. They do have the handout, though.
Is he up next?
Is that on you, Jason?
Well, he could be, when, whenever you're ready, actually, so.
The only thing is, what version of the presentation do they have?
The 23rd.
The one for the forum?
Yes.
That's helpful, because there's a couple of added slides. Let's open that one.
Great, so, good afternoon, good evening, my name is Jason DeRozier, I'm the Senior Planner for Housing and Public Engagement with the Old Colony Planning Council. Old Colony Planning Council, or OCPC, has been brought in to work with the town for MBTA Communities of 3A Compliance. During this presentation, you'll hear me use MBTA Communities and 3A interchangeably. It's essentially the same thing, MBTA Communities is the name of the law, 3A refers to the section of 40A, which is the State Zoning Enabling Act. So MBTA Communities is the law, 3A is the act within the, the Enabling Act. So I've said this before, I'll continue to say it as I talk to folks around town, I'm sure many of you knew that this was on this special town meeting warrant last year, last fall, so you might be asking yourself, why are we doing this again? It's because of the Supreme Judicial Court's decision in the ruling against, in the Commonwealth versus Milton. Any town that was not compliant, or had not sought compliance as of that point, have the opportunity to either try to seek compliance, or to make changes to their overlay District Four compliance, which is the avenue that East Bridgewater is pursuing for this year's town meeting. So you can skip the agenda slide, that was specifically for the, the forum. So Old Colony Planning Council, OCPC, is a public agency tasked with supporting 17 municipalities within the Old Colony region, plus six additional area agency on aging communities. OCPC assists our member communities with housing planning, economic development planning, transportation planning, comprehensive planning, environmental and sustainability planning, some GIS mapping, and much more. It's also worth mentioning that OCPC did not write the law, or the regulations around MBTA communities, we're just helping communities in our region find ways to reach compliance, if that is their choice to do so. So the next slide is just, or the image in your packet, is just the, the region, OCPC region, the ones in orange are our member communities, the 17 member communities, the ones in green are the six area agency on aging service areas that we work with. So the next one is just an image of the MBTA communities. There's 177 cities and towns in eastern Massachusetts that are required to comply with the MBTA Communities Law. The next slide, it's just an update on those municipalities, so nearly 120 communities out of the 177 covered by the law have already rezoned to comply with it, which represents approximately 67% of MBTA communities are in compliance. Some of the ones within the OCPC region are Abington, Bridgewater, Easton, Pembroke, Plymouth, Stoughton, and Whitman. So just a, a few minutes on MBTA community zoning requirements, these are the basic requirements for East Bridgewater under the guidelines. First, multifamily as a right at 15 units per acre, there'll be time spent on talking about what this means specifically. The district or zoning district must be of a reasonable size, so that's approximately a minimum land area for East Bridgewater of 50 acres. There can be no age restrictions or limits on unit sizes, number or size of bedrooms, or number of occupants. The one there in red, within a half mile of a commuter rail station, is in red because it does not apply to East Bridgewater, because you do not have a commuter rail station, subway stations, or ferry terminals or bus stations, so that one does not apply to East Bridgewater. So what is multifamily housing? As defined by Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 1A, multifamily housing means a building with three or more residential dwelling units, or two or more buildings on the same lot, with more than one residential dwelling unit. Within each building. In applicable developments, 10% of units must be quote-unquote affordable for households earning up to 80% of area median income. For East Bridgewater, that's approximately $105,000 for a household of four. So if housing is allowed as of right, what can the town require? The planning board may still require a site plan approval process. Construction would still require a building permit. Any permitting through the Board of Health or Conservation Commission, submission of plans and inspections would still apply. And then individual property owners will have the option to decide if they want to redevelop their property under the new zoning. No property owner is required, however, to change their property or develop new housing just because the zoning under it changes. What is East Bridgewater's unit capacity requirements? And so I will mention this a couple of times. One common misconception about MBTA communities and the unit capacity is this is not a housing production target, only a zoning exercise. The MBTA community zoning bylaw does not require any development to happen, just zone for multifamily housing. The town does not have to produce units. It just has to zone to allow housing production. And so essentially, there's been this number thrown around as it relates to MBTA communities. For East Bridgewater, it's 750 units. So the MBTA community zone needs to allow for up to 750 residential units, which can sound like a big number. And it is a big number, right? The reason that number came up is because essentially in the 2020 census, there were 5,211 housing units in East Bridgewater. They took 14% of that and said 14% of the overall housing units should be sort of zoned for multifamily zoning, which is how they came up with the 750. 750 is 14% of 5211. And the minimum density requirement, again, is 15 dwelling units per acre for 50 acres. Just a couple of things to note. Again, the law does not require that multifamily housing be built. The law only requires towns to zone for multifamily housing. So they could be built in select areas. It does not matter what has been built or what will be built. All that matters is the underlying zoning. If anything does get built, the actual density may be far less than 15 units per acre due to constraints such as wetlands, floodplains, et cetera, et cetera. 3A is not an affordable housing law. That's 40B. Sometimes those are also confused with each other. It's important to note that they are different. The law does not require affordable units to be built. The law does not require communities pay for infrastructure to support housing development. That would be the responsibility of any developer who wanted to develop under MBTA communities. And the law does not override the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act or Title V for septic requirements. So what is 15 units per acre? Look like 15 units per acre can be an abstract concept for many people, especially if you're not in the weeds of zoning, like, you know, some of us planners might be. So just a couple of minutes on sort of demystifying or building out this abstract concept of 15 units per acre. So essentially, the way the number, the math works out is that you take your overall number of units, you divide it by the total acreage of a parcel, which then gives you the gross density. In a little more detail, there are two types of density within the context of zoning. First is gross density, which refers to housing units over a particular area, including surrounding public rights of way, such as sidewalks and streets. Net density, however, refers to housing units over a single parcel. Net density is always higher than gross density. MBTA communities is only dealing with gross density. At the parcel level, the look of 15 units per acre will vary based on the parcel size. It could mean a three-unit townhouse on a 10,000-square-foot lot, which is approximately a quarter of an acre parcel, or a 45-unit building on a three-acre parcel. This density does not mean high rises will be built. In many places, this density can be achieved by allowing for a maximum height of only two to three stories. There are a number of slides and a little bit talking, showing how East Bridgewater already has dwelling units or buildings that exist within the 15 units per acre or more that would far exceed the requirements under MBTA communities. The following visualization show 15 units per acre at different scales. And so each one of these figures is 15 units per acre on different scales. So you have the, I'll call it mid-rise, or maybe for East Bridgewater, a high-rise apartment complex on the far right. The reason why that's 15 units per acre is because it's a larger parcel underneath it. Whereas the one to the immediate left of that, the three sort of unit townhouse there is also 15 units per acre because you have more sort of units per acre on a shorter, on a smaller sort of parcel. And then to the far left there shows 15 units per acre on different scales, the larger building in the middle with the townhouses surrounding it. The next image shows what 15 units per acre looks like on more of a neighborhood level. So each one of these buildings is also representative of 15 units per acre. Looking at East Bridgewater specifically and exploring residential density within the East Bridgewater community, 88 Riddle Road, Riddell Road, 98 units, parcel acreage is 7.59 acres. And so the units per acre or the parcel density of 88 Riddle Road is 12.92. So it's under what you would get from an MBTA community's, by right, the 15 units per acre. And that's just to highlight the next one here. 85 North Central Street, two units on .11 acres for 18.36 units per acre. So this actually is more units per acre than the multifamily sort of community. That was on the previous slide. Similarly, 15 North Bedford Street, two units on .09 acres for 21.48 units per acre. 693 Bedford Street, five residential units on .24 acres for approximately 21.14 units per acre. Moving along through the neighborhood, 17 West Union Street, five residential units on .21 acres for units per acre or parcel density of 23.96, almost 24 units per acre. 31 West Union Street, another building with five units on 1.14 acres, units per acre or parcel density of 35.97, almost 36 units per acre, which is double the 15 units per acre or exceeds double the 15 units per acre requirement for MBTA communities. And then lastly, 11 West Union Street, a building with six units in it on .08 acres for units per acre or parcel density of approximately 79.48, or almost 79 and a half units per acre, which is, you know, far exceeds the MBTA communities' district. So this is just to highlight how there's already buildings in the community that are sort of at the scale and the density, lack of a better term, that is already experienced and adds to the vibrancy and nature and character of the East Bridgewater community. So where in East Bridgewater are we talking about? Essentially, this is the parcel viewer view of the MBTA community zone. The next slide shows the 11 parcels that are included in the proposed district. So it's south of the Whitman East Bridgewater town line. To the east of the district is Route 18 or North Bedford Street. To the west is Winter Street. And then it goes down to the south there, past the wetlands. So two of the parcels, two of the 11 are owned by the town of East Bridgewater. Three of them are part of the JSC Holdings or the 40B development that was recently approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Three of them belong to N-Star Electric Company. One of them is owned by Hornster Farms. And then two of them are private ownership or homeowners own them, one on Winter Street and one adjacent. So the next slide shows a triple view of the zoning district with different overlays. So the first one to the far left is the zoning district in the light purple. The one in the middle there with the darker purple and the gray are wetlands. And so the green and the gray are wetlands. And so the green is obviously the wetland areas, and then the gray are wetland buffers. You can't build either in the wetlands or in the buffer areas. So that takes up a significant part of the overall zone that's being sort of proposed for the zoning district. So essentially, the buildable area is whatever is in that darkest purple to the far right. Again, minus wetlands or buffer areas. And the significant part of that parcel, of those parcels, again, is that 40B development, which is multifamily housing, which is already sort of proposed and approved for this area. And so much of this land is categorized as wetlands, and so therefore constraints exist where you cannot build on it. Essentially, this is just the zoning bylaw in terms of the dimensional standards. Nothing in the bylaw exceeds two and a half or three and a half stories. And then just a little bit on failure to adopt zoning changes. And so if the community decides not to adopt or pass MBTA communities at town meeting this year, the same sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? Consequences, maybe, or sticks still exist within this context, loss of sort of state grants and the chance that the Attorney General could decide to pursue litigation against the town for noncompliance. One of the findings that came out of the town versus, the Commonwealth versus Milton is that the MBTA communities law is constitutional. And so the state does have the constitutional right to withhold funds for noncompliance as well as the Attorney General sue for noncompliance. So if at any point the state determines that an MBTA community, whether East Bridgewater or another, is not in compliance, that community will not be eligible for funds from those 13 grants on the far right of this slide. Failure to adopt these changes potentially exposes the town to lawsuits, including from the state Attorney General and potential fair housing enforcement action. So the 13 grants that are sort of pending MBTA communities' compliance or 3A compliance are Mass Works Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, Planning and Project Grants, Community Planning Grants, Land Use Planning Grants, Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Projects Fund, the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, the Rural and Small Town Development Fund, Brownfields Redevelopment Fund, the Real Estate Services and Technical Assistance Grant, Commonwealth Places Program, and the Local Acquisitions for Natural Diversity Grants. Just a little bit on how the town of East Bridgewater has used some of these grants in previous fiscal years. So in fiscal year '23, the town received $290,096 through the Complete Streets Program to fund new sidewalks. In fiscal year '23, $300,000, a little over $300,000 was received for police grants to fund the hiring of additional police officers. In fiscal year '24, $127,000 was received through the Community Compact IT Grant Program to fund a project that will locate and digitally map the town's drinking water system and integrate it into the townwide GIS system. And then in fiscal year '25, $100,000 was received through the Green Communities Program to fund the weatherization at the Council on Aging, Fire Department, and Department of Public Works. And so the last slide, and this is just showing the process or schedule for this work with the town of East Bridgewater. So ongoing, April through May, are various presentations like this one to the town boards and commissions. We had a public forum last week, so that fits in with that public meeting there. And then I'm doing like coffee hours and various pop-ups around town for anyone who's interested in learning more, asking questions, that's what. So 23rd was the forum. May 5th is the planning board hearing. May 12th is town meeting and pending how the town meeting vote goes. I may or may not be working with the town of East Bridgewater to submit the final sort of paperwork or application to the state. If town meeting does not pass MBTA communities, there'll be no need to do that. However, if it does pass, there would be obviously a need to sort of help support the town in finishing up and wrapping up the compliance application.
Questions?
Sure.
Are we going to do this presentation at town meeting?
If he does it and doesn't that fast.
That's what I was going to say. That was perfect.
Conservation Commission at 6:30.
I think that the way that's presented is much more clear than anything that was presented. No, you know, not criticizing the planning board, but clearly there's things in here that are explained in a different way that might be beneficial at that meeting. Having said that, I know that when most people go to town meeting, they already know how they're going to vote.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't want to waste anybody's time.
I agree.
But.
It's a lot better than the one that we had at the COA a couple of weeks ago. This has made a lot, lot more sense now than it did back then. I definitely feel it should be something similar to this has to be presented at town meeting.
Yeah.
How it's done, but that this is a format that I think people will understand a lot better. I think, again, some more emphasis on these grants, okay? And I think there's other ones out there that we could be losing too. Out there, you want to do a scare tactic, but you want to make sure that they understand everything out there.
Yeah, my goal for this whole project or assistance is to make sure that when people are going to vote at town meeting, that they are, what's the word I'm looking for? Informed voters, that they know what they're voting on. They have all the information, which is why this is laid out in a particular way. And then maybe a little more detailed, there may be previous presentations on this topic. I do have May 12th blocked off on my calendar, just in case I'm fallen told to be there. I can be, so I can work it out with whatever makes sense.
I think that the slides of the units that already exist that are illustrative of what this would be is really, would be really helpful because I know people are afraid about it's going to change the character of the town there. You know, there's a lot of talk about that. And to show people like, well, this is what it could look like.
Right.
I would think would help people understand that.
And that's something we didn't see last time, which, like I said, it's so much different than before. And again, you've got another couple of weeks, so we can even, I know you were going to, you know, just a lot more. And then, and again, working with the planning board, I'm sure they have something that they have to say also, but this is a great lead into anything else that they could possibly be saying.
And this was mentioned at the public forum last week, and will just be an ongoing talking point, is even with, if the zoning is in place outside of the already approved 40B development, you probably would not see any additional development of this particular zone in what I would say in the short-term or medium-term future. Like, no one can say what long-term will bring, but looking at the scenarios and sort of doing some sort of scenario planning, outside of the 40B development, probably not a whole lot of development outside of that. And if there is development, would it look a little bit more like that smaller density housing that's in these slides versus any additional larger-scale development?
And that would be a very important closing statement.
Absolutely. It meets the requirements, but it's not a likely scenario. I think it's something people, it's a message I would really wish people could hear and use when they go to vote.
Yeah, I agree. So we had two issues, not issues, but two situations at the same time. We had the 40B and then we had the MBTA zoning come up. And that just completely threw everybody for a loop, you know, trying to explain both. And then, of course, we've got a district in this whole thing for the SOAR that's coming in. So, I mean, you couldn't have made a tougher situation for the planning board or OCPC or wherever else.
A perfect storm.
It was. It was unbelievable. But, I mean, look, you present, and I say it all the time, the whole board says it, you know, we present what is brought to us, to the voting public, and, you know, they make a determination on what they want to do. But I think to Carol's point, yeah, if we can have some sort of a small presentation regarding it, and, you know, if you're available, I think, you know, based on the way you're very clear and to the point with what you just discussed with us.
Quick.
Yeah. I think that's helpful. You know, now, again, are we going to have 15 people up asking questions? Potentially, maybe, you know? So just, you know, plan on that as well because some people are pretty hot on this topic, for sure.
At the forum, you said, went well.
Yeah, I mean, there were people, obviously, who were not in favor of it, but it was civil. Yes, absolutely.
And the one at the COA, that was civil, too. I mean, there were some good questions being asked, and they've been addressed in this remake very, very well.
Yeah, great job.
And again, you know, we can sit there and talk all we want, but if people would just go there to the town meeting with an open mind and just listen to what is being said, not because of what you've heard from someone else who hasn't been involved, what you've heard in social media, people who haven't been to probably any forums, but they just don't want this, and it's that simple. That's not what the town should be about. The town should be about listening to what is going to happen in the future, way down the road, but please be exact, understand what you, and if you don't understand it, then ask the question. But don't just go in there with the blinders on, saying, it doesn't matter what they say, we're just against it. Okay? That's not what, you know, open town meetings should be about. But please come out, everybody.
Yeah. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
It's great.
Thanks, Jason.
We have 11 minutes.
Can we go into public, go into executive and come back in 10 minutes?
Sure. If I have five minutes, I have five minutes. I don't think it's going to be more than.
Okay, we can do that, then we can get into the 6:30. Okay, motion?
Oh, sorry, that's me. But don't just go in there with the blinders on, saying, it doesn't matter what they say, we're just against it. Okay? That's, that's not what, you know, open town meetings should be about. But please come out, everybody.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
We have 11 minutes.
Can we go into public, go into executive and come back in 10 minutes?
Sure. If I have five minutes, I have five minutes. I don't, I think it's gonna be more than.
Do that, then we can get into the 6:30. Okay? Motion?
Oh, sorry, that's me. I make a motion to close open meeting and return, close open meeting and enter executive session, and we will return to open session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, to discuss personnel policy, we're not actually doing that right, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, council on aging director, health agent, library director, building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, treasurer, collector, director of assessing IT director, town accountant, town administrator, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, firefighters, clerical, DPWs, superior officers, patrol officers. Vote to close executive session and return to open session. I, Carol Julius.
I, David Cheney. I can just forget. We'll be back in 10. Out of executive and back to our regularly scheduled meeting, and we are all set for a 6:30 public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Notice is hereby given that pursuant to the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held relative to transfer of common victual, all alcoholic beverage license, alteration of premises, and change of hours is followed from Ye Old Standish Grill, Inc., doing business as Ye Old Standish Grill, Richard O'Leary, manager, to BJB Restaurants, Inc., doing business as Town Tavern and Tap, Bobby Joe Esposito, manager. Premises, 175 North Bedford Street. A public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, first floor conference room, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, on Monday, April 28th, 2025, at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Identify yourselves and let's move on.
Members of the board, my name is John Iata, McDermott Colty, Milan Hanley, located at 28 State Street in Boston. To my right, your left, is Bobby Esposito. Bobby is the proposed manager of record. And to her right is Dave Barry. Mr. Barry is the sole officer, director, and shareholder of BJB Restaurants, Inc., which is going to be doing business as Town Tavern and Tap. Just briefly talking about their experience, Dave has been in the restaurant industry for over 25 years now. He's the owner and operator of Town Tavern and Tap in North Attleboro and in Wareham. He's also the owner and operator of Town Tavern and Treehouse in Pembroke. He's looking to bring that brand here to North Bedford Street, replacing the Ye Old Standish Grill. Bobby Joe also has over 25 years of experience in the restaurant industry. She's TIP certified, she's familiar with the rules and regulations of the board, the ABCC and the laws of the Commonwealth as it pertains to the sale and service of alcohol. Both Dave and Bobby have extensive experiences, I've addressed, and they have a perfect track record in terms of the sale and service of alcohol, no history of any violations. The, what we're looking to do, Dave is purchasing the existing business as well as the real estate, so this is a significant investment, both of time and finances. Is looking to kind of refresh, revamp, so we've asked for a request as alterations. So part of the alterations, nothing structural of any sort, but is going to be a makeover, going to freshen up the place as I stated. The bathrooms will be made to be ADA compliant. The bar area will be expanded. In their experience, they find that a lot of customers like to have more of a bar atmosphere in the sense of not necessarily for like the alcohol service, but more of to sit down to be able to watch TV, catch up on that kind of barstool kind of concept. So Dave's looking to expand that. And there's some, you know, you'll notice some cosmetic throughout the entire restaurant, really trying to bring it up, make it modern. So the brand itself, Town Tavern, it's American fare, their focus is on quality food and beverage. It is a family restaurant, that is what Dave strives to have in an ablehood restaurant, something that has been embraced in all the communities he's been in, and he really thinks it's gonna be successful as well. The third part was the change of hours, so we're looking for just a couple hours earlier on Sunday to 10:00 AM. I think the existing license was a 12 noon license, so we're looking for a 10:00 AM license to allow for like brunch service. And as, and if things get busier, you know, Dave will expand the, the hours as well. But right now, on the hall, he's looking like 11:00 AM opening Monday through Saturday and a closure of, I think, 1:00 AM. I think Friday was the only night that they had license to 1:00 AM for some reason, and it was midnight the rest of the night. So we're keeping those same closing hours for now. Dave, if you wanted to, or Bobby, if you had any, either questions or if you wanted to chime in?
No, I'm just, obviously, I live next town over in Halifax with my wife and three young children, and I'm hoping to plant our roots in another community as we've done so in the last three locations that we've had, with a lot of community support and a lot of different groups such as little league teams, all the sports and all the communities, veterans affairs, you name it, we've done it. So I'm looking forward, especially with it being as close as it is in comparison to even some of our other locations as well. So it's kind of right next door, so to speak, so I have family that lives in East Bridgewater and the surrounding communities. Bobby lives in one town over in Bridgewater, so we definitely have a lot of knowledge of these areas and just want to plant our roots and continue on with what Ye Old Standish Grill did with being here for 70-plus years, I think they were here, and that's what we're trying to do. So if you guys have any questions or anything, I'd love to answer whatever I can.
What are you planning on doing, Dave, with the function room that's there now?
The function room will be eliminated. It'll end up opening up the space itself, just kind of more additional.
Dining area.
Dining area throughout. It'll still be there, it'll literally just be dining area.
Okay.
That's very exciting. I've been to the Treehouse several times. My husband drives your relatives' kids on the school bus.
Oh, yeah?
And, and so there's usually a Town Tavern gift card that comes our way at Christmas time for the bus driver, so.
Isn't that illegal?
No, because it's a private entity. But yeah, no, I think it's, it's great, and I love the idea of brunch. I think it'll be a good addition to the community.
Yeah, we do brunch in all of our other stores. It's a great little start to a good Sunday morning, you know?
Yeah, and I hope you'll get the support. You know, the Standish has a loyal clientele, and I hope that they will transfer over to you and give you, you know, the same loyalty and also entice new people that haven't been there for a while to come and try someplace new.
Bobby and I met a lot of the staff to give them the opportunity of who we are, and we'd like to continue on that. Obviously, with their closure and us, you know, in the renovation process.
It's gonna be a while.
You know, if their schedules suit what we're looking for, we've given them the opportunity to go work at our other location, so they're not without a job in Pembroke, and then transition back into the new location when it opens up.
Oh, that's great.
But not only just that, I mean, we're probably end up providing, I'd have to guess, probably an additional 30 to 40, if not more than that, jobs at that one location in itself. Just like so, definitely a lot of, you know, a lot more opportunities for job, job opportunities.
I found my next job.
No! Looking for something to do. Do you need a host?
Yeah, right.
At your service.
Give him a little towel over there.
Yeah, you know, bittersweet, obviously, you know? Standish Grill, having been a fixture here for the old family and what they did, you know, there's a ton of memories in there. You know, that's for not only this board, but for a lot of the community members. But it was time, for sure, you know? And I can't think of a better group of people than yourself, having, you know, as Carol has, been to the other locations and know what you guys are about, and then meeting you personally here, I'm excited to see you guys do, do great. It's a great spot.
Yeah, it's an unbelievable spot.
Absolutely. So, you know, I don't see anything but positive things happening for, for you and then for the town of East Bridgewater as well, so welcome.
Thank you very much.
Just, just to hear what you're doing with the current employees is fantastic.
Yeah, that's very much appreciated, I'm sure.
Yeah, we were excited to meet with them yesterday. I think we had, was one of them here tonight? We had.
Oh, we know him.
We had, I think there was an additional like.
He's been a fixture.
He starts next. He comes with.
I don't remember anything about that now.
About 10 other individuals, 10 to 15 other individuals that I met yesterday. So it was nice to just kind of put the stress that I'm sure that their experience into, you know, to settle it down and say, hey, come over and we'll open you, we'll, you know, welcome you with open arms.
They were very excited.
How, how long do you anticipate the renovations take and how long it will be closed down?
I'd say probably looking at approximately a fall opening.
Okay.
Great.
So you want to clean, you know? I, when I, like to do everything I do, if you drive by and you, I'm sure if you've been in the community of driving through Pembroke and, you know, the fixtures that were there in the past when it was hoses and the lucky dog and all that, to what I've created over there, and I like to make sure I put a special touch on everything, just not only from the outside of the building, from the parking lot to walking in the front door. So I want to take my time doing it and doing it right.
Great.
Okay, good. Okay. Very good. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope.
See, we have a mountain of paperwork, which is totally in order, so we'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there anyone else out there that would like to speak?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So when you make the vote, can you just do it based on contingent on the ABCC approval?
Yep.
Contingent on what?
The ABCC approval.
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the transfer of common victual, all alcoholic beverage license, alteration of premises, and change of hours, common victual license, automatic amusement device license, and entertainment license at 175 North Bedford Street to BJB Restaurants, Inc., doing business as Town Tavern and Tap, Bobby Joe Esposito, manager, contingent on the ABCC approval.
Yeah, but just the alcohol end of it.
Yep.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you, folks.
Look forward to seeing you again. Thank you so much. Look forward to seeing you.
Absolutely.
Good to see you too. Thank you.
Good luck, yeah.
Thank you. Looking forward to having you here.
Thank you.
Yeah, right.
This is my second last meeting, so then I'm retiring, so I'll be there. I'm going down to Treehouse tomorrow morning. What time do you reckon? Seven, 7:30, 11?
I like a Tito's dirty martini, not too dirty, extra olives, good cheese if you got them.
We're happy you're open on Monday, because we're always looking for something that's open around here on Monday night.
That's true. Very excited. Okay.
All right, I think we, five minutes.
We did all of the action items, sir.
Yes, we have an appointment at 6:45.
We did tell people 6:45, so yes.
Okay.
But if they, I don't know if you did open forum, in case any of these individuals.
I was about to say, is anyone here for open forum? No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I thought this was your last meeting, so what is?
No, you can leave.
He's got one more.
I may not be here next week, but if I am, it's my last meeting.
All right. I didn't want to miss out.
Okay.
And, and I may have an offer on one of my kids' houses, so.
Oh, beautiful.
Okay.
See you, Rob.
I have no report or anything.
Well, just want to bring them up to speed on the conversation we had about the engineer.
Sure. We had, the working group on the engineer, basically what we're, we're going to move forward with the Board of Health Agent, as is, not making any changes at this point. The group is going to look during the summer to how we would fund the town engineer position. Right now, we have various departments using third-party outfits, a review of plans of various types from Stormwater, obviously, anything else, and see how we would put together a financial package that would move those fees to cover the town engineer, possibly also adding new fees for some of those departments that don't have them, or increasing fees for additional inspections as the work goes on.
Thank you, Joe.
Any announcements?
No, not that I can think of.
Make something up. All right, don't. More discussions?
The Bridgewater Rotaries Club Citizen of the Year event is this Thursday night, May 1st, at 6:30 at the center at St. Jim Rock. Our own Chuck Haran is being honored this year as East Bridgewater Citizen of the Year.
Fine choice.
Probably know Chuck from his work with the Food Pantry and also the Kiwanis Field of Flags.
Sure.
Chuck's responsible for that, so tickets are $20. They are available at the door, if anybody wants to go.
When is it, Carol?
This Thursday night.
This Thursday.
At 6:30. Are you going? You must be going.
I'm going.
I'm going. I'm going with last year's Citizen of the Year.
COA?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get down there.
That's all I got.
I like Chuck, Chuck's a good guy.
Are you finished?
Huh? Yeah, I just got one, so I wanted to publicly, I will be on the O'Callaghanie Planning Meeting for the month this Wednesday, and I wanted to, ahead of time, wanted to thank Don Sullivan, who was successful, finally, with all the work to get that federal grant for us, finally approved. So I know he did a lot of, lot of heavy lifting, and, you know, I want to thank obviously Charlie and Rebecca and Lee for their work at this office as well. You know, I mean, it's a lot to be said, I, I, I'm not sure we've ever had a federal grant, certainly not of that caliber, you know, $3 million before, so I will, again, Thursday night, Wednesday night, thank him through the OCPC meeting, but I wanted the Board to know as well that Don Sullivan, and it's not often I usually give these public people very high reknocks, you know?
We know how you feel about us.
So that's, so that's a big, a big.
And we're going to do the invitation for bids that day, in the sense of the, we'll be open, publicizing and publishing the invitation for bids for the project this Wednesday also, and then at the end of the month, the bids will be open. And we're still on schedule to break ground sometime in June.
Yep, absolutely.
Peter, that's not taking anything away from you, we, we know how you push things along when you have to, with the idea that, we understand we work slow at times, but, you know, with your help, we're moving that along to, still slow.
We're getting it.
On our way. Thanks, Peter. Okay, we will now, 6:45, we're having a discussion on a possible 25 mile an hour speed limit for Summit Drive, and I see we have some residents here who would like to move up to our table here and identify yourselves and give us your case.
If you could just give your name and address before you speak.
Jack Gollington, 38 Summit Drive.
Erin Walsh, 84 Summit Drive.
Rich Barrioli, 24 Summit Drive.
Okay.
Okay, so, thank you for meeting with us. I know you, Karen Foley wanted to be here, and I think you have a letter from her?
Yes.
Okay. You have a letter from me. And then we got the letter here that says 25 miles an hour. So we thought that was fine, until Jack and I and Karen did our own speed checks and some, we did some checking on our street to see just exactly what that would be like. And I also spent hours on the Mass DOT site, reading everything there is, so I understand exactly what's required on our street and what's acceptable. So, so having said that, our street, just to give some statistics, our street is from the top of West Union Street to the bottom of the curve of Summit Drive, where it turns about 90 degrees, it goes into Flint Circle, and then it continues on to Summit Drive, is 646 feet. So what we did was, we did some tests, and I did, I used some calculators from the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. What we found out is traveling at 30 miles an hour from one end of the, from one end of the street to another saves approximately three seconds. Between 30, going from 30 to 25 miles an hour, reducing the speed from 30 to 25 miles an hour saves three seconds. Reducing the speed from 25 miles an hour to 20 saves four seconds. Reducing the speed from 30 to 20 would save someone seven seconds. So we're here, we're here because of our grandchildren, not for us.[1703.88] There is approximately, I think, between the kids and the grandchildren, approximately 19 young kids on that street at different times, the lowest being under three. Some of the other, some of the other things that I did also was I checked the stopping distance. So at 30 miles an hour with an average stopping distance, reaction time of 1.5 seconds, which is for the average driver, at 30 miles an hour, the stopping distance on a dry road with a 2% incline, which is on our street, is 107 feet. At 25 miles an hour, it's 84 feet, at 20 miles an hour is 62, and at 15 miles an hour, it takes 43 feet to stop your car. Now, our street is just below average of the town, our street is 20 feet. The average two-car garage is 24 feet. The average street in East Bridgewater is approximately 24 feet. So we don't have any sidewalks, and we don't have anything to protect the little children. And, so I went on the, the Mass DOT. And what they recommend in this, they say that reducing the speed limit only accounts for approximately two miles an hour. And they said using the, what do they call it, SFS, which is speed feedback signs, is valuable on certain situations, and I'll just quote, "However, under most scenarios, speed, general speeds will drop immediately after the installation due to a novelty effect of the device. The extended, the extent speeds increase back to pre-installation rate over time, and is often related to the setting in which it was installed." So what they recommend is, if we can't reach a speed of 20 miles an hour, which we, we would want it to have, it says, and this is a quote, "In some instances, target speeds may be high, a target speed is, the target speed on our street, we'd like to have is 20, and cannot be reduced. And if it can't be reduced, in these instances, user needs, separation of user, or users as means separation of pedestrians so they don't get hurt, is needed to make safe through treatments like sidewalks, separated bike lanes, and protected intersections." Obviously, we can't do that. "Or vertical deflections, countermeasures, i.e. speed humps." So what we're proposing is, we either reduce it to 20, which we don't think people are going to go to 20, if, for instance, did you know that Thrill Hill, do you know where Thrill Hill is?
Yeah, we do know.
Thrill Hill is 20 miles.
It's not as thrilling as it used to be.
Used to be Thrill Hill. But Thrill Hill is 20 miles an hour, look at your speed sometime when you're going over Thrill Hill, and see what your speed is. It's probably at least 30. So I don't think speed signs reduce it, but what we'd like to have is what West Bridgewater gave their residents on Scotland Street, which is a main street, and they put speed humps there. And I use that all the time. I even go over it with my boat, so it's not a speed bump, it's a speed hump. It slows the cars down, but it's not radical, like if you're going through a parking lot with a hump in it, and you, you know, you can't.
It's cool.
So our hope is that we can do something more than what we wanted. The reason we wanted 20 is because we thought if we put portable radar down there, it was, it would suffice, but according to the Department of Transportation, it only works for a while until the novelty wears off, and then people go back to their old speed again. So if we could get a speed hump, we believe that would do it, and that would hopefully save one of our grandchildren from getting injured, seriously injured.
It's a lot of traffic on that street today, these days, with package delivery people. There's another seven houses down the end of the street that they put in a few years back. I don't know how many cars each one have, but it's more than one. And the street is narrow, we measured the width too, and it's, figures out to be about 20, some, in some sections, it's less than 20. So it's, it's kind of crowded, and we just figured that you get a FedEx truck going down and a car coming up, and they're both doing 30 miles an hour, you don't want your kid to be running up in the street, that's going to be bad, so.
One of the things we found too is, if you ever got stuck behind somebody and you're doing 25, you swear you were crawling, stand on the side of the road, and that's what we did, we stood on the side of the road, we did 25, we did 20 and 15, you cannot believe how fast a car is going. When you're standing less than, well, two feet from the road, because my, I'm right on the road, how fast that is when you see 25 when you're standing right next to it. So it's incredible how fast it is, I didn't believe it either.
Yeah, you don't, you don't realize it until you practice it and see, you know, both ways, driving and being in the pedestrian.
We've talked about these speed humps before with DPW, and I don't remember exactly.
And I know that John is not interested in putting speed humps in. I mean, we can bring it back to the Traffic Safety Committee again, that is a possibility, but I know that he's been opposed to it. One of the reasons, and we've talked about signs going up and everybody wants a sign, it's the same, will be the same challenge for him, once we put a speed hump in any particular road, is he will get 100 requests, and they do cost money to put in. I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm saying it's more a matter of, okay, if we're going to spend money on speed humps, we're spending it across the town, and we're going to not do something else, like maintain the other part, other parts of the road. Again, I'm not saying it's wrong, it's simply, there's going to be so much money that you can spend, and if you want, you're going to spend it on one thing or another, along with maintenance issues of the speed humps and safety issues for the public emergency vehicles and such.
Signs, I, signs don't work, it's that simple. Enforcement works if there's signs there, but again, you have to be there at the right time, stuff like that. I'm sure we can go out any street out here, look at the, the signs, Union Streets, my perfect example, I live off Union Street, the signs both there, 25 at each end of the street, and I don't believe there's one car that does 25, they're doing 35 or better. It's not the signs that are going to change anything.
Right.
It's unless the police are there. And even if we did, we had talked about a while ago, talking about doing enforcement for the thickly settled area, the best we could do on that is 25 miles an hour, we could make that for the entire town, unless posted differently. Would that make a change? And that would just require signs at all incoming into the town of East Bridgewater? But unless it's being enforced at that particular time, signs just don't work. And each sign that we put up, it's around $250 just to pull one of them out. But, and I'd get, I'd have to again talk with, you know, we'd have to talk with John Haines about these, I know they're dead set against them, because one, I don't think they last that long neither, because they are so low to the ground that they get there and after a short period of time, they're useless.
Well, we figured that because 99% of the people in this town would never drive down Summit Drive.
Right.
They would, because it's a dead-end street.
Yeah.
That we, you know, something like that would last a lot longer, because, but, but those big trucks, you know, FedEx trucks and some of the things that come down here, I've gone on the street, the FedEx guy especially, I waved him down, he waves back to me, I keep telling him to slow down, he doesn't slow down. I've called and reported him. It's incredible, it's scary. And, and some of the residents in the new section, they drive pretty fast too, so we don't know who they are, but we've all been there almost 50 years, I've been there 51 years. When it was a small street before the new development, we would police it ourselves. Everybody knew everybody, all the kids were the same, so we kept it down low. Now it's crazy.
So you say the addition at the end of Summit is, is that just a total of seven houses, or is it a lot more back there?
Just seven new houses in the, yeah, Flint Circle and Summit Drive is extended to the right.
Okay, and that's a total of seven new houses?
Yeah, seven new houses and 12 more cars at least.
The street kind of, it bend, it turns both.
I've been down there, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have any idea what a speed hump would cost?
We don't want to have to.
We have to ask Scott, I don't know.
Can, can I, we don't have, we, I understand you're saying signs don't work, speed humps don't last. We, we don't even have one speed sign on the street at all right now.
Right.
Aside from us standing out there and physically waving people down as they're flying by, and like you said, you know, you could be standing outside and you, God, the speed limit is 30, and someone's going 25, it feels like they're flying down the street, especially as they're approaching the, the bend either way. I understand the, the DPW does not want to do, speed humps, signs don't work, what, what can we do?
This is what's recommended by the DOT, and I think they put a figure in there of $2,000 or something like that it may cost, or something.
For a speed hump?
Yeah, but 2,000, is that worth a child's life?
We're, we're coming to you, and you're telling us basically that there's nothing, like you're going to talk to the DPW, but there's.
Well, John had said, for the signage, John had said he would be, you know, with a 250, he would put the sign up, but the question is, is whether it has the effect.
But honestly, I don't think that's going to change anything. As far as the speed humps are concerned, that's $2,000, okay? It doesn't sound like much, but once, if the DPW says, okay, we're going to start that.
Yeah.
Then the town's going to have to come up with an awful lot, because I can assure you, the street I live on, they'll be up here the next meeting asking for the same thing, because they fly down my street too.
I understand.
We don't have the answer in what you're saying. We, we don't, we can talk to DPW, we can ask them what they recommend, even if we put 15 miles an hour down there, signs don't work.
But even if they don't work, I think at the least, we should give these people a sign, like, I mean.
At the very least.
But I don't think we can legally, can we legally go less than 25?
Well, that was going to be my next question.
So there's no, there's nothing that allows us to do 15. 20's allowed, but the problem is you need to do a speed study, which, just like we do on the, on the larger streets, the problem with that is, as you've just found, pointed out, the majority of people want to go faster than the speed limit.
Right.
So what the speed limit studies, or speed study says is, well, in fact, the majority of people are going faster than the speed you'd like them to go, and we're setting the speed based on the motorist, not what you want. So I, there's no point in my mind of trying to do a 20 mile per hour speed limit, because we're only going to be allowed to do that with a speed study, the speed study won't show a 20 mile per hour speed limit, it will show like a 35 mile an hour speed limit instead. So I would certainly recommend going to the 25.
Isn't that crazy? But we can do 25, because we're allowed to do that under our current.
We can do, yes. And I'm not too sure at this time, because it's not the first request we've had, that we shouldn't be doing something town-wide, make it 25 miles an hour, unless posted differently.
There, there was a law passed a couple of years ago that would allow you to do town-wide, or even neighborhood-wide. It's, it's called like the Slow Zones Program, and so that way you don't have us coming here this week asking for our street, and then the neighbors, you know, our street's a dead end, but I, I work in the legislature, and I work for representative in the city of Boston, and we were having, you know, each street come, and they would come with a petition to the, the Transportation Department in City Hall, and they were so inundated, because they would go and they would change, you know, they'd get the petition for one street, they'd change it, and then through traffic would, everyone would be flying down that street, and then they would be coming, and it was like one thing after another. So they created this, so that way you could have neighborhoods, and you could do multiple streets at a time, so that might be something.
Yeah.
Didn't we establish that traffic study committee?
We have a safety committee.
We have a traffic safety committee, you could, but on the 25, you're correct, but it, and you could do a group of streets at one point, or you could do the entire town, or you can do one town, one street at a time, those are all options. But the thing is, right now, the only, you know, tonight, we're talking with you all, so that if, you know, Abbey Avenue isn't here, I don't know that the board wants to on an individual basis, I think the board would either do it for your street tonight, or do the entire town tonight.
I, I mean, my preference would be to do it for these people and make sure that there are signs, and then send this over to that safety committee and gather some information on whether we should do it for the entire town.
I can let you know what the traffic safety committee recommended for this situation.
That's what?
I can let you know what the traffic safety committee, because we did discuss this.
Okay.
What'd they say?
So they're recommending that the board vote to put up a 25 mile an hour sign.
Okay.
And then reach out to the police department and have them put a radar on the sign, and then have the police department move it to the area.
For this situation, but they haven't looked at the idea of doing the whole town?
No, that's just for the situation.
We make a note of it.
For Summit.
Make a note of that, Rebecca.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of, you know, when we have people like yourselves, residents that are, you know, committed to their street and their project, come in and, you know, state their case and what's going on, I think it adds a lot more to, you know, what we're trying to do as a board. I agree, I think that, you know, these thickly settled areas, I guess, for lack of better terminology, should probably have a, a limited speed limit of 25, for sure, but I think that, you know, we, we got to kind of, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a big undertaking, right? There's a ton of roads that we know we're going to see, so to start off with, you know, my suggestion would be, you know, this is a perfect case, start with these guys right here, you know, we get some signs up, if we can do the, the monitoring. I know they did one in, I go to the registry and, and for my insurance agency, and I drive down, they've got two of them, you know, two of those, and you're right, for the beginning of it, you're like, oh, shoot, I've got to slow down, try not to swear anymore. Well, at least I'll miss TV. You know, you, you slow down, you know, you see the sign, and you think, oh, man, are they taking pictures, or you know, what's the story? So it, it does work out to a degree, but I think for a street like this, where, you know, you don't, other than the UPS guy or, or, you know, the UPS, you probably don't get the same people, other than the residents that are coming in and out of there, but somebody coming down that area, it'd probably be more beneficial to an area like this, because you would see the sign and, you know, the little speed thing, which I think they're, I think they're solar at this point too, I don't think it's powered, you know? So I would be certainly supportive of, of getting something like that in this area, and, you know, seeing where it goes from there. Tougher, tougher reach for those, for those speed, what do you call them?
Humps.
Humps? All right, not bumps anymore, now they're humps?
Bumps are bigger than humps.
Are they? That would be a, a bigger undertaking, I think, you know, to put something in there, but, you know, look, we start with, with the easiest, as I call them, layups, and that would be getting a sign, maybe with the, with the, with the visual of, of the speed on there, and see where that, that takes you, but I think, I think you guys are going to be happy with that, in that area, and that, for the specific Summit Street that we're talking about, because I just don't think you have the, the repeat of, of the same people driving through, did it cut through to go somewhere, or whatever the case may be. There'll be other town, I mean, other streets that, you know, would be more difficult.
Is this mostly the, like Amazon truck, stuff like that, or is this your new neighbors down the end of the street? You don't have to answer that, I'm just curious.
I would say both.
It's both.
Both, yeah.
They, they usually, the neighbors are flying out of the, you know, the cul-de-sacs, but then the delivery guys are flying both ways.
When, when they, when they leave to go up the street, or to go to West Union, it's uphill, so I'm thinking that it starts up here, that I got to stomp on the gas to get up the hill. But if it's only a 2% incline, you really don't, but.
Right, right.
It could be more, I'm just guessing, I mean, we've got a slight incline, I was generous in giving it only 2%, in the calculator, if you go 3%, everything changes, it gets even worse.
You know, you know for sure, you've got a son that works at the school, you know, you know what's going on.
I have one other question, on the DOT website, there was something that said, something about the streets, and East Bridgewater popped up, and it was Pond Street. Is there something different about Pond Street? Was there something about the speed on Pond Street, or something changed, or, I didn't understand what it meant.
We lowered the speed on Pond Street a few years ago.
Yeah, we lowered that a few years, because it's got a very dangerous curve.
Yeah.
Same thing, 25.
And, and again, they patrolled that, they enforced it for a while, but they can't be there all the time, I was over there not too long ago. Humps might, it wouldn't help them.
Right, you're right. So this board has been very, I'd say, active in, in the streets and the roads, and, you know, obviously being aware of the dangers that come there. I mean, we put in a guard rail over on Bridge Street, you know, the corner there for Mr. Litchfield, you know, so we're, we're certainly, you know, here to try to support you in any possible way we can, and again, I think.
We, we can try, and we can do something, but we're not guaranteeing it.
Okay.
I'm all for it. My husband got hit by a car rolling the lawn.
Right, right, right.
I'm all in favor of lowering the speed limits.
He's doing the speed limit all the time? No.
Yeah, we'll present that to the, to the group, the committee that Rebecca is a part of, the safety committee.
Well, the board can. Oh, okay. The 25 right now, it's recommended, it's Rebecca's.
A bigger study, I think, should go to the safety committee.
Right, I'll go.
I make a motion to reduce the speed to 25 miles per hour for Summit Drive.
To, to ask the DPW director to throw the necessary signage along with a radar sign.
All of that, as well.
Yeah, I, I second what he said, through you, Carol.
Any feel of the discussion? Let's hope not. All those in favor?
Aye.
You can tell it's this last couple meetings.
I know, he's only got one more meeting.
We're stuck putting stop signs in them halfway down. How about that, we put red lights halfway down the street with the, with the red lights?
Never works, right?
Never works.
We, our lawns are covered with signs already to slow down, and we got a children's sign that the DPW did put up at the end of the street, but.
We'll get the sign up there.
After a while, it becomes furniture, you don't see it.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You know how many times I've wanted to roll a ball right out in front of one of them? Just to scare them.
We, we can't condone that.
Don't do that, don't do that.
I'm not asking you to condone it, I'm not saying I'm going to do it, I want it.
You just said it on camera, so.
At least we know what you're thinking about.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. I hope this helps.
Let's hope no one else does it.
Thank you.
Hey, congratulations, it's going to be a great gig for you, I'm sure.
Yes, very good.
Keep those pizzas coming.
Yep.
Carol, what do you think you want? You want to bring the traffic committee?
What's that?
A speed study?
The whole thing.
Whether we should look into doing the whole town.
Oh, the whole town.
At that, yeah.
Also, maybe we, we.
However, that works. But how does that work? Like, wouldn't it make sense?